Hi, everybody. My name is Benjamin Good. I'm from the Scripps Research Institute and you are in the special session on community[10.34][10.34]intelligence for bioinformatics. I think we'll see a lot of more people coming in shortly. Thank you for staying at sticking it out to this last special session of ISMB this year. It's been an exciting couple of days, but I know you're all very tired. I think you're going to find it well worth your time to be here for the next couple hours. Each of the speakers in the session has been specifically invited here today because they are a leader of a rare, very rare kind of application in bioinformatics. There have been many attempts to build, to take advantage of community intelligence, to follow in the model of Google and other resources like that, but very few of them have actually succeeded. And I'm very excited to hear a little bit about how they've made it work for each of their different applications. So, to get things started, we have Alex Bateman from the Wellcome Trust, the Sanger Institute, about assessing the contribution of scientists to Wikipedia, PFAM and RFAM into annotation.
Okay, thanks, Ben. Okay, well, good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for coming. So, I guess some of you are here, you've heard about this kind of stuff before, and what we're trying to do is get the community of scientists to do our work for us essentially and annotate information about proteins and RNAs. We've been doing this for probably four years now, and so it's a good time to reflect and see, has it all worked? Has it been worth it? And I'll start off with an introduction and community annotation, then I'll tell you about the progress, how we've been doing, who's been editing, how much they've done. And then finally, the sticky subject of how are we going to get scientists to edit more? How can we motivate them? And I'll talk about some of the experiments that we've done in motivating scientists. Uh-huh. That sounds like Andrew's just tweeting. So, my personal scientific goal is to try and completely and accurately classify all proteins and non-coding RNAs. And essentially, we know that there are tens, hundreds of millions of sequences, and what I want to do is kind of compress this vast wealth of data into just a few thousand families to make this information more understandable. And that will allow biologists to go off and make hypotheses and test them. And now with next-generation sequencing, testing these hypotheses, a lot of the experiments mean you generate even more sequence. So, it's kind of a cycle going on here. So, these classifications that I'm building, you can find them in the RFAM and PFAM databases. And they've been pretty successful, and I've seen a few talks and posters where people are actually using these things, which is gratifying. And essentially, what both PFAM and RFAM do is they take something, they make a seed alignment, which is a set of representative sequences representing that family. We build a model, a statistical model called a profile HMM for proteins or a covariance model for RNA. And then you can search all known sequences and make a full alignment. And these full alignments could be hundreds of thousands of sequences within them. And that's all fine. We've been doing this for a lot of years. We know exactly how to do that now. We're pretty efficient at it. But what we're not very good at is writing the annotation for each of these entries. You want to tell people about what the biology is and what references, they should read about them. And this is where the community annotation comes in. What we'd really like is for the biologists who've actually understood and knew about these families of proteins and RNAs, for them to write this stuff for us, because they know all about it. But I've been a complete skeptic of community annotation for many years, and my view of community annotation is essentially this. So, community annotation database is like a graveyard. You can wander around for hours trying to find any signs of life. And generally, if you do find anything that's been community annotated, it's been done by the people who wrote the database in the first place. So, history shows that community annotation in biology hasn't worked very well. I'm going to have to turn that off. We have a tweet storm going on. Sorry about that. Okay. So, the thing that really changed my mind about community annotation was Wikipedia. This was a real-life community annotation project, trying to create an encyclopedia of everything, and it really worked. You could, you know, it's just become this kind of de facto standard for finding out anything about everything these days. And Wikipedia is getting pretty big. Here's how big it would be if you printed it all out and bound it up, and that's without the pictures, I believe. And two really nice features are that it's completely freely available, and you can reuse it and repurpose it in any kind of way that you feel. But also, it's highly accessible, so anyone in the world with access to a mobile phone can access Wikipedia. And the growth of mobile phone use in developing countries is skyrocketing, it really is. And actually, recently, Orange have announced that they're going to, in Africa, make Wikipedia freely available without, you know, to anyone with a mobile phone, a smartphone. Okay, so, a particular reason why I think Wikipedia has become so all pervasive is what I call the Google factor. Try typing any scientific term into Google, and Wikipedia is almost always the top hit. And that's funneling people to Wikipedia. And that means that if you want, anyone wants to know about your scientific area, the first place they're going to find out information is Wikipedia. So, that's why I think it's, you know, not only is it good for my science, but just generally I've become evangelical about telling people they should edit Wikipedia. So, here's the master plan. We have RFAM. We'd like the biologist to annotate it for us. Here's Wikipedia, so all we're going to do is just pull the articles about RNA families into our database. Unfortunately, when we did this, there were five articles about RNA families in Wikipedia. Not so handy. So, what we had to do was we had to seed about 600 new articles in Wikipedia, where we took our couple of lines of annotation and a couple of references and put them in Wikipedia. We got a tremendous amount of help from the Wikipedia community, in particular, the Molecular and Cellular Biology Wiki Project helped us to format them and put them in and fought battles for us, so they didn't get deleted as being too boring by the Wikipedians. So, here's an example of what it looks like. This is an RNA family page in RFAM, and it's the ribA family. And so, here we have the annotation now. It's a Wikipedia article that we've pulled in. If a biologist wants to edit it, they just hit this Edit Wikipedia button, and that takes them to Wikipedia where they can update it, and then we'll download it the next day. And actually, so RFAM just becomes this thin veneer of functionality around the side of the Wikipedia article then. Okay, so that's the sort of introduction into what we're doing with Wikipedia. And I've talked mainly about RFAM, but we've now introduced this for PFAM as well. Okay, so who's editing these Wikipedia pages? So, obviously, the scientists from RFAM and PFAM themselves, we're creating the pages and editing them, just like all the other sort of dead community annotation databases. But also, we're getting contributions from scientists, from what I call proofreaders. So, these are people who inhabit Wikipedia and just go around fixing your spelling for you and your grammar and that kind of stuff. There are also robots, little programs that run around doing stuff, fixing your references and, you know, all sorts of interesting things. And my least favorite are the Vandals. And there are people who think it's really funny to edit the article about giraffes, to say that they've got seven hearts to pump the blood to their head and that kind of thing. So, they're a bit of a pain, but we can deal with that. Okay, so here's a summary of who is editing our articles. And on the Y-axis here is the number of edits made by each of these users, going up to about 1,000. And here are the users in descending order of how many edits they've made. And so essentially, we've got Bolcock here is the king, who's made 1,000 edits. And this is just stats since November of 2011, so he's been really busy. But so have lots of other people. And the coloring scheme here is that blue are the RFAM and PFAM scientists, so you can see there's a number of us who've made quite a bit of contributions. In red are other scientists. And so, there's a whole bunch of them through here who've done a bit. For example, Zasha Weinberg's an expert about riboswitches. He's taken on editing those articles. Then we have in green here are the Wikipedians. These are the people who are fixing our reference formats. And then, the other ones, this sort of horrible purplish color, they're the robots, so they're also making a large number of edits. And so, this is just the top of a very long distribution, and there's a long tail that sort of goes around the room a couple of times, of several thousand editors who just make a small number of contributions. Okay, so let's look at the number of edits in total. So, since November of last year, we've had about 16,000 edits to these articles in total. And here's splitting them up. So, we've got the ex-famers, my work colleagues, other scientists, the Wikipedians, the robots, and then what I call the long tail. This is the several thousand other people who've just come in and made one or two edits. And they do make some quite significant and important contributions. And of these, this long tail, actually, those people are a kind of split of scientists and Wikipedians, essentially. Oh, and Vandals, too. Let's not forget them. Okay, so now, let's look in more detail about exactly how many characters of information have been added by each of these classes of people. And so, the, just let's focus on the outer part here. Let's think of it as a pie chart. So, these are the RFAM, PFAM scientists, these are other scientists, the Wikipedians, robots, and the long tail. So, you can see the scientists are contributing about a third of the characters, the Wikipedians about a third, and then the long tail and the robots are a further third. And that's adding characters. And then, on the inside of this, this pie chart is showing how much was deleted by each of these classes. And what you see there is it's the Wikipedians. They're deleting stuff that they don't like, taking stuff away. They're sort of the arbiters of the contributions that we as scientists are making. So, now, let's focus in on per editor, per actual user, how many characters are they adding or taking away? Then things look pretty different. So, now, things are really dominated by the scientists, both in ex-fam and other scientists. So, three-quarters, or, let's see, so, no, that's wrong. The ex-fam scientists are really making a large number of edits per, or adding a large number of characters per user. The scientists less so, and the Wikipedians about the same as the scientists here. And actually, the robots don't make very much contribution in terms of the number of characters. And surprisingly, the long tail, actually, they're just, they're not actually adding a tremendous amount per user. I mean, they're coming in, they're doing one edit, and then they're going away. So, although overall, they're contributing, you know, a significant fraction of stuff, each user's doing very little.
Are ex-fam scientists adding paragraphs?
Yes. Yeah, that's right. But also, references and other stuff, there's all sorts of things that are going on. And we'll drill in a bit more in detail coming up shortly. Okay. So, I haven't talked about the Vandals. I'm not going to go into it in much detail, except to point out my favorite piece of vandalism on Wikipedia. And so, someone on the page about riboswitches came up with this. So, riboswitches were parodied in an episode of The Simpsons where Homer goes on tour to eat ribwiches. And so, this was added in 2007, and it's pretty plausible, because Homer Simpson in series two, episode 13, does indeed go on tour to eat ribwiches. But what we haven't been able to verify is that they were parodying riboswitches here. So, after a couple of weeks, we sort of thought about this, and it did get taken off. And, well, so there have been other vandalisms. There's another one, but I can't really show it to this audience. It's kind of not safe for work. Okay, so, once one of these less safe vandalisms about a tattoo of a Pokemon on some famous celebrity's body made it through to our website, we realized that actually, in unusual circumstances, vandalism can, you know, make it through onto our website. And we thought the Wellcome Trust might get upset about this, so we instigated what we call an approval process. So, we have a web app where now every single edit that's made on Wikipedia on our pages, we look at it and we can approve that edit. Actually, there are a whole bunch of editors. As you saw, there are a relatively small number of editors that do a lot of the work. And we pre-approve them, so any edits they make, we don't have to look at. And so, that's meant that we can, yeah, keep it clean, let's say. Okay, so now, I want to look specifically at how does a small number of example articles grow over time? And this is a graph showing the growth of the article about RNA. And so, on the Y-axis, this is the number of characters in total in the article. And then, this is over time, so going from 2001 up to the present day. And so, you can see that, actually, all this blue here, these are small, the long tail, so people who are making a small number of edits. So, over time, they're growing it. But occasionally, a scientist comes in and makes some big set of edits, and really transforms the article and brings it to a new position. And then, once that happens, people start fiddling around with it again and just sort of adding little bits and bobs. And in general, I think Wikipedia grows in small increments. We as scientists are much more used to just writing an article in full totalness and publishing it, but that's not how Wikipedia grows. Okay, so let's move on to a couple of the article, other articles. And they're not so exciting, there's not so much going on. But this is an article about microRNA mer2, and due to slight incompatibilities with Excel and PowerPoint, the line of the graph is obscuring exactly what these things are. But essentially, what happens is not much. For a long time, we added the article into Wikipedia back in 2007, and then a scientist comes along. Actually, it's, it looks like there is sort of a long-tailed person. They don't make many edits, but they're definitely a scientist, because we know them, expanded the article, and then it bimbles along again, just getting small edits. So, it's kind of a phase transition where a scientist comes along and transforms the article. But it doesn't always work like that. Here's another RNA element, and here, we created the article, not much happens. Then there's a huge growth here, and then it disappears. And I thought this was probably vandalism, someone putting some junk on the page. Actually, no. When I looked at this, this is a really nice improvement to the article. Lots of scientific content was added. And then it disappeared. It turns out that it was the same editor who took the stuff away. So, the scientist who was editing got excited, put the stuff in, then got cold feet and thought, "Well, I'm not sure about this," and took it away. And then, so, nothing happened for a while. Then, some RFAM scientists came in and made some edits. And then, that same scientist came back two years later and added some of that content back in. It's pretty weird, but, you know, each to their own. We don't care as long as the contributions are coming in. But it's kind of, there is this sort of social thing about, you know, how do we get scientists to feel comfortable and come in and, you know, get their contributions in and get them to stay in? And that is a real challenge. Okay, so the final bit, I just want to talk about motivating scientists to edit. So, one thing that we did, we know that scientists are motivated by publications more than anything. If there's a paper in it, they'll be there. So, we struck a deal with a journal called RNA Biology, and we have a new track of papers which the authors can publish about a non-coding RNA. And when they do that, they also have to write a Wikipedia article to go alongside that. And that Wikipedia article gets peer-reviewed alongside the main paper, and they get published at the same time. And to date, in the last three years, there've been 21 articles published, so 21 Wikipedia articles have improved enormously. But that's still a fairly small rate, given that we've probably got 1,000 different articles about RNA families. And it's worth noting here that PLOS Computational Biology also started its topic track recently. So, if you want to write an article about, get your name on a paper in PLOS Computational Biology, then you can write a Wikipedia article and have that published in PLOS Computational Biology. So, I'd definitely, you know, recommend that as a good thing to do. Okay, so in the experiments I'm going to talk about, what we did was, we created about 50 stub articles for microRNAs. And a stub is essentially, it's about one or two sentences about a thing, and then it gets a Wikipedia article. What we did do with these stubs is though, we put in a further reading section, so people would see what was known about this. And then, we watched for the last two years to see what's happened to these articles. And so, if people are given no motivation, then the articles have increased by about 2,500 characters in two years, so a 13% growth in size. So, they're growing, but it's relatively slow, and it's patchy. So, most of them grow by a little. One article grows by a reasonably, quite a lot, the one on mer155. So, you know, it's patchy. A scientist comes in, sees it, is interested, and edits something. But what happens if we motivate scientists to do this? And so, I'm the Director of Graduate Studies at the Sanger Institute, which gives me an unhealthy amount of power over our PhD students. And I saw an opportunity to train them in Wikipedia, which I did, and then gave them a homework assignment, so that they had to edit one of these microRNA stubs. And that was very good. So, they expanded the microRNA stubs, on average, by 8,300 characters, and on average, they grew by about 211% in size. And the product of what they did is very nice in a large part. And so, this idea that students, this expendable workforce that we can bend to our will, is something that we've continued the theme, and along with ISCB, we have competition starting soon, where we're going to ask students to edit Wikipedia articles about computational biology. It's a very nice prize for them for the best contribution. So, but can you do more? I mean, what's really the most motivating thing you can think of? Perhaps if your job depended on it? And hopefully, that's what we have here. So, we had an open position for a curator on our database, and we asked each of the people who applied to expand out one of these microRNA stubs as an example, to test their curational ability. And so, here are the results. And on average, the articles increase in size by 355%. So, this is almost double what we get with the students. And the asterisk here represents the person who actually got the job. So, you can see that, you know, this is a great way to motivate people. But, you know, unless I sort of regularly fire and rehire, this is not a very scalable solution. So, the students have it for now. Okay, so I'm at the end of what I wanted to talk about. So, hopefully, I've convinced you that Wikipedia is a good model for community annotation. And scientists do contribute, but they're not the sort of the whole story. We don't get as much contribution from scientists as we'd really like currently. So, the scientists contribute, but actually, the database curators, the people who work for PFAM and RFAM, they absolutely are essential for this endeavor. You can't, as some people think, just say, "Oh, I'll put my database in Wikipedia," and expect that it will all be brilliant. There's a lot of social engineering that goes on behind the scenes to really get this to work. So, but, you know, student projects are an excellent way to improve Wikipedia content. And if you happen to run a, you know, graduate training course, and they have to do a literature review, something like that, have a think about whether there's some way that you can make it so that they contribute to Wikipedia, which will be very motivating for them, their work will get to be seen by a lot of different people. Okay, so I'm going to stop there with, and thank all the people in my team. It's Olympic year. It's in just a few days' time. And so, you can see, we're all getting into Olympic mood here with our gold medals. And in particular, so, Jen Dorpe was really instrumental in all this work, and almost all the data that I've shown you, Sarah Burge produced. So, great thanks to them, and thanks to you for your attention.
Can I interrupt just for a minute? Thank, I want to, on behalf of ISMB and myself, that I was chairing this special session, I mean, the entire special session, to thank the organizer. I know that there is a huge amount of work put in this effort, so thank you very much on your behalf, and a small token of appreciation to you, and I won't bother you anymore.
So, I wanted to, thanks for a very interesting talk. I wanted to ask, how did you first get involved with Wikipedia, and what are the barriers to entry? For example, I'm interested in doing something similar with the SCOP database. How do you get started?
So, we were quite lucky, I think, in that at our institute, the Sanger Institute, there's someone who has been a long-term Wikipedian. In fact, he wrote the original MediaWiki software. So, we had a sort of a tame Wikipedian that we could go and talk to. And we also got really a lot of help from the Molecular and Cellular Biology Wiki Project. So, if you talk to the people, if you find the right place, and actually, that same place would be beneficial to you, then they'll do, you know, a tremendous amount of help. If you're a scientist who just wants to make a contribution to an article, then I'd suggest reading the article we published in PLOS Computational Biology for 10 Simple Rules for Editing Wikipedia. And that gives you some hints and tips on how to start off editing, because there is the potential, if you, you know, go and rewrite the entire history of science article and overwrite the old one, you piss off a lot of people and they just revert your edit. So, there's sort of ways and means to just start off slowly, build trust with the community, I would say, rather than sort of trying to change things, you know, drastically, immediately.
I've heard opposing arguments about encouraging people to use Wikis and the quality of the starting article. So, one says that if you put up an article with some things that are clearly missing and clearly bad, then people will rush in and would never touch a perfect article. And I've heard the opposing one that says, "You really want to start with something really good, so that people build up further." I'm curious, you started with a bunch of stubs, but do you have any other experience or thoughts as to which is a bigger motivator? Something that's already very good, or something that really somebody can dive into and not feel afraid?
Yeah, it's, it kind of depends. So, I mean, there are some pretty bad articles in Wikipedia. Just take computational biology, which really needs some help. So, if anyone wants to go and edit that, I think it's a pretty badly, you know, put-together article. And, yeah, there hasn't been a rush of computational biologists to sort that one out over the years. So, I don't think an article being bad is really a good motivator. And being a great article is not a great motivator either. I mean, really, what happens is Wikipedia is just incrementally changing. That's really how it changes. There's a really nice video. Look up heavy metal umblaut. And there's a really nice film which goes through the history of this article in a film. And it just tells you everything you need to know about how Wikipedia works. It's quite hilarious and fun to watch.
So, I have a question. It's, Wikipedia, of course, is very useful. So, how, how do you think, how far are we now from the joy that we can really, really use API over something like automatic pipeline? We can use the information from Wikipedia? Because you think about the Oxford English Dictionary, it's probably one of the first crowdsourcing project in human history. And now, even now, we still cannot use, open use a dictionary API freely, especially when you have to pay something, pay for the Oxford Dictionary or Norman Dictionary. So, if we could like automatically build an API based on Wiki, we can automatically annotate text, in text finding process or retrieval, so that would be a great joy. How far do you think we are going to go?
So, I think that's an interesting question of how extractable is information from Wikipedia? And that's, Wikipedia is relatively unstructured. So, coming from a biological database community, where we're really used to having everything absolutely defined and formatted, and you get paranoid that it must, you know, you've got to have a dash in the right place and a semicolon here. But in Wikipedia, you, there are format rules, but people don't necessarily follow them. So, you have to just kind of relax and let people get on with it. Now, extracting information out of that, it becomes easier if you use something called semantic media Wiki, but Wikipedia doesn't do that. And so, hopefully, maybe Andrew will talk about some of the efforts that they have. They've been, I think, leading the way in working out how to extract real biological information back out of the Wiki and using that. So, hopefully, he'll mention more about that. that.